This has started. Okay. Welcome everyone to the Tuesday, July 22nd, 2025 Tumwater City Council Work Session, and calling the meeting to order. And I will go ahead and we have, I'm trying to see, we have Councilmember Swarthout may join us. I'm not sure she was not, she was kind of a question mark if she was going to join us, so she will be excused. And Councilmember Swarthout just joined us, but Councilmember Von Hope is excused tonight. The rest of the council members are present. So with that, we will start off with the 2025 Comprehensive Plan Periodic Update on the climate element. And so I will have staff, Alyssa, are you doing it? Or Brad? Okay.
I think, I think from here because the speaker is right here, so we can hear you.
Excuse me?
Yeah.
Thank you all. Good evening. Talking about the climate element, this is one of many presentations you've had on the draft climate element so far. Tonight, I'm going to cover briefly the recap on state requirements, what we heard from the public, how we incorporated feedback and prioritization schema that was suggested by our climate policy advisory team. Right, so in terms of state requirements, we're required to have two different sub-elements. And I'm going to speak first to the greenhouse gas emission reduction sub-element, in which we need to have overall greenhouse gas emissions generated by land use and transportation lowered to be consistent with Washington State's statewide target of net zero emissions by 2050, which is more aggressive emissions reduction than we had previously had a resolution agreeing to. We need to have reduction in per capita vehicle miles traveled without exporting that outside of our jurisdiction boundary, and we must prioritize reductions that benefit overburdened communities in order to maximize the co-benefits of reduced air pollution and environmental justice. Then we must also have a resilience sub-element.
Alyssa, quick question. Are you sharing a slide because we don't see anything?
Ah.
I mean, I'm imagining what you're saying.
And I don't have any lasagna images tonight. I could not think of a food metaphor for this, for this part of the climate element. I'm sorry to disappoint. I don't think so yet.
No, I don't see it on mine.
We're working on it. And by we, I mean deputy city clerk. Maybe if you close the presentation and then go from screen share first.
Still no. Yeah, it's still not showing up on mine.
You can go over there and kind of staff like that, what I'm doing.
We got more help coming.
Almost there. Take this time to remember all your fond memories of previous questions and feedback that you provided on the climate element, perhaps. Oh.
There we go.
Wonderful. So there was my slide about greenhouse gas emission sub-reduction or reduction sub-element. And now the resilience sub-element. Now I can't click.
Well, as Councilmember Dahlhoff said, it is Technology Tuesday.
Ah, I got it. Thank you. The resilience sub-element must address natural hazards created or aggravated by climate change, including sea level rise, landslides, flooding, drought, heat, smoke, wildfire, and other effects of changes to temperature and precipitation patterns. We need to make sure that we're identifying, protecting, and enhancing natural areas to foster climate resilience, as well as vital habitat for state species migration. We need to identify, protect, and enhance community resilience to climate impacts, including social, economic, built environment factors, which support adaptation to climate impacts consistent with environmental justice. We need to equitably enhance the resilience of communities and ecological systems to climate change. So that's an interesting part. We need to plan for humans and non-humans in terms of climate change resilience, be consistent with best available science, and prioritize overburdened communities who will suffer disproportionately from environmental impacts and climate exacerbated natural hazards. Now, I added a slide that's next since the last, since the packet went out, just because I remember getting this question a couple times ago about, well, what are the environmental justice issues or overburdened communities that we have in Tumwater? Perhaps we don't have any. I'd like to bring attention to the fact that we have a interstate that bisects the city, and because of that, we do have impacts related to diesel exhaust PM 2.5 emissions. We, using the Department of Health, Washington Health Disparities Index, which ranks from one being the best to 10 being, ooh, not good, we rank eight out of 10 in diesel exhaust PM 2.5 emissions, likely because of I-5. We do have a higher rate of asthma in Thurston County than other parts of the state, as you can see in this map here that uses data, I think from 2013, where we have between 10 and 13%, where the general average of adults is 10% in Washington State. So we do have health concerns related to air quality that we do need to work on, and will have productive co-benefits from reducing greenhouse gas emissions and vehicle miles traveled. We also rank 10 out of 10 for proximity to Superfund sites because we have Palermo, which is a cleaned-up Superfund site here in Tumwater. We have one census tract in Tumwater, in Western Tumwater, happens to be the one that I live in, that ranks eight out of 10 for population with disability, eight out of 10 for cancer deaths, nine out of 10 for death from cardiovascular disease, and nine out of 10 for premature death. We're working on Brownfield, so while we are not the Love Canal, we are not a terrible community in terms of environmental justice concerns, we do have some things to work on that can be benefited by this climate work as well. Oh, and this map down here with the little dots, that is citizen or community member-generated data of them putting dots on a map of where they think that there are environmental justice concerns from our online open house. All right, so we reached out to the community as part of the climate element development, both when it was kind of not on paper yet, down to going through extensive reviews of it being on paper. We formed a climate policy advisory team, which was a recommendation from the Department of Commerce's Climate Element Guidance, and we focused on community members being the members of that climate policy advisory team, which sets us apart from a lot of other jurisdictions in Thurston County who chose to focus on internal staff for that team. We held an in-person open house, which many of these pictures are from. We had an online open house, which had access to the same information and asked the same questions, so people that could only participate online weren't having a less experience. They were having the same experience as others. We held a public comment period. We have presented to the Thurston Climate Mitigation Collaborative Community Advisor Work Group. We have gone to meetings and given presentations to community-based organizations, nonprofits, and local agencies, and we have tabled multiple times at the Tumwater Library and the Food Bank Satellite location over here at Mountain View Church. Here's pictures of all of those different ways of reaching out and some of the people that we reached. What we heard, that's supposed to be a brain, it's not really that beautiful. It's a word cloud from the feedback in a brain format. It's not great. But what we heard is a lot of demand for multimodal transportation system improvements and EV charging. A lot of people wanted preservation of green space and urban canopy. We had a lot of people talking about their concern for heat and smoke, as well as their lived experience with heat and smoke, harkening back to past years with the heat dome and big smoke events, and changes that they've made to their lives or concerns that they have for their neighbors related to those climate hazards. We did have some comments about erosion of trust in city government. We had people expressing a desire to engage diverse age groups and demographics, people having a lot of support for programs that benefit low-income, young, and elderly populations, a lot of people bringing up specifically building energy efficiency, and then some, definitely some conflicting viewpoints among the comment pool, especially on the topics of incorporating equity. Those mostly came in around the month of January. We did put together a comment register of every comment that we received, including comments from people in person when tabling at the food bank or at the library, inclusive of if they gave their name, who they are, the method, what they said, a staff response, and a checkbox for if we incorporated feedback or not. Those that don't have a checkbox for incorporated feedback, we actually got a surprising number of compliments, and I felt we were checking that box for feedback incorporated for compliments. But also, some people were asking for things that were in direct conflict to the state requirements, so we couldn't include those. Then we worked with our climate policy advisory team to develop priorities, because there are more than 200 actions in the climate element. Most of those are in the resilience sub-element because we haven't done as much work in that particular area. And this is what the CPAT or the Climate Policy Advisory Team came up with for those prioritization categories, which are then allocated to draft implementation actions in Appendix A of the element. Highest impact climate actions, those are impacts, those are actions that will have really big greenhouse gas reduction benefits, or will show that they would probably be beneficial in terms of reducing casualties due to climate hazards immediately or in the near term. We have easy wins, things that we're already working on, or things that seem like they would be easy, and those have been vetted by staff as being the easier items on the draft implementation action list. Future-proofing for everyone is a really cool one that I think came out of this kind of organic discussion of how to prioritize stuff, and that's untangling potential future conflicts by creating policies and legislating on the side of climate action, being really specific about that, and having the right people at the table, or as many people as possible at the table, including the building community, to make sure that future things that we might be requesting for reducing building emissions is clear, and people know it's coming, and it's future-proofed for future developments. Then we have two that are kind of the long and short-term equity pieces. Everyday concerns and building longevity. Everyday concerns is for short-term equity. These are actions that we can make to make our community more just and equitable immediately. And then building longevity are those things that we can work on. It's just going to take more time to really have that benefit. Now, this is maybe my shortest presentation to full council ever. Discussion and questions.
All right, any questions? Councilmember Dahlhoff.
Thanks, Mayor. I don't have a question, just to verify that this conservation element is in our next cloud folder under the comprehensive plan, right? And that it's, it's available for us to review, if we want to schedule a meeting with you and Brad. If it's more effective and efficient, we can do that.
I'm not sure if it's in your next cloud. I'll ask Brad to speak to that, but by all means, I'm willing to meet with individual council members with Brad as well.
Oh, I do see it in there. I see it in there, yeah. For me, I meant with, oh, no, never mind, it's the conservation. So I guess the timing of when that will be in the folder for us?
Well, the timing is when I remembered to do it, which is, I reminded you to do it last week, but I forgot.
Oh, I just re, I just refreshed, Brad. It says 7/7/25, climate.
Okay.
I, I will note that the CPAT has made some review of the actions that have the priority icons in Appendix A that I've gotten as recently as today, so those aren't reflected in that particular version, but there will be a slight update that's mostly just the prioritization icons that might get moved around.
From July 25, yes.
All right, Councilmember Kathy.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't know if this is the right time to bring this up. I meant to bring it up also at council, but I wanted to say that this publication this July 2025 of Tumwater Today, and all of the things that were covered in there are definitely conservation things and ideas for people in their planting and their caring for their, their property, and how to flip your lawn to flowers and all kinds of things. This was excellent. This is very well done, and also the photography with it. And I just wanted to give a shout-out to the water resource people, and especially to Carrie Gillum, who gave a lot of notes on how to, how to make your, your space, your patch of the woods beautiful, and conserve water and space and all kinds of things. And I just wanted to say that not only is this well-done, but there's a lot of response to these kinds of things under, you know, the climate and how to be a part of fighting this, or working on it, or making something happen that we can save our planet, that when people get something that they can do, you know, even right in their own backyard, or they can pass on to other people, or talk about, it really makes a difference. And so, kudos to, however, this particular, you know, publication got out and about, lots of, lots of, I've gotten lots of response to it. And of course, it's online also. So, thank you.
All right, any other questions or comments? Well, thanks, Alyssa. Of course, that was really good. So, yeah.
I don't, no, no, we won't need the clicker. We're going to have.
Okay. All right, so the next item on our agenda is Mayor-Council Working Dynamics Report, and we have Dr. Wendy Frazier that will be joining us, so welcome, Wendy, Dr. Frazier. So I will let you get settled and, oh.
Take someone passing by.
See, I'm missing the chocolate.
I know, there's a few things for people. I just have a few goodies and we'll, we'll talk, this is for all of you at some point.
Do you want to set the context?
Who are these signs?
I can't. Yes, please.
Okay, I'll do that for you.
Okay, of course. So, all right, so we have, I'll let Lisa go ahead and provide the background.
So, in, so we've been working on the strategic planning process, and that's been really important to make sure that we're focused on creating a structure and a framework within which we can have difficult conversations about what we can, what we can resource and what we can't resource in terms of our future budgeting process, helping us identify priority systems and criteria for how the council as the legislative authority can deal with difficult issues and make decisions about choices moving forward. And in order to be able to do that, it's really important that there is a, an atmosphere of trust and respect and, and commitment to solid communication. And so, we reached out to Dr. Frazier. She has a wonderful reputation. She actually came highly recommended from my colleague at the City of Olympia, as someone who has a really good way of helping elected bodies and boards and groups work through any potential challenges in terms of communication styles and that type of thing. So with that, I will turn it over to you.
So before I do that, so what I'm seeing on my screen is not what I'm seeing on the thing, but, so I want to make sure, does, what does council members see in their?
You see Tumwater City Council interview themes and suggesting next steps. It's a word document.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Just wanted to make sure, because when you get two different things, I want to make sure.
All right. Well, it's nice to be here. I did bring some chocolate. I try to have a little more casual conversation. You know, I appreciated the opportunity to meet with each person. I thought before I just kind of dive into some of the information I would like to share with everybody, it's just what I might call my guiding principles for our conversation tonight. One that really struck me that was, I like asking some individual questions in the beginning, and I asked everybody about, you know, why did you want to be a member of the council? Why serving the city mattered to you? And it was, it was actually a very cool set of responses. There was this deep connection, this deep appreciation for wanting to serve the citizens. And as I listened to that, I thought, you know, that is what you tether yourself to, right? That is what I would call really that North Star. So I love thinking of things like, you know, is what I'm doing, you know, how is that furthering that, serving that, supporting that? Is it doing that in a positive way? Is it kind of getting, you know, is it becoming a challenge? What can I do to continuously keep myself tethered to that? So I just wanted to say thank you to all of you for that connection. Second, you know, the intention about this, I guess I, again, I mentioned this as I talked to everybody, but I have a firm belief that there's no one person or group that has their act completely together, and there's no one person or group that's not trying something. We're always on a continuum, and I think it's really healthy for groups just to kind of stop and do a pulse check. How are we doing, right? And I really have this belief that it's leadership to me. You can't always predict what's going to happen, but the question is, what are you going to do next? So we have this opportunity, right? You're going to, I'm going to mirror back what I heard, right? And just a little caveat around, I had one hour with each person. So, and I watched a little bit of your online sessions after I talked to you all. I really wanted to kind of have a fresh perspective. So what I'm going to share back with you is really what I heard from you. I needed to hear it from at least two people or more for it to show up in this. And again, I'm mirroring back the things that you said that you thought were going well, and here's some of the challenges. Boy, if we could make a difference here, it would strengthen our communication, it would strengthen our problem solving. So, let's see. The last thing I wanted to share before we, I just kind of start walking through, really kind of the findings, but my, because my hope is that we have a chance to talk a little bit about it. I don't suspect that a group like this, once you have a chance to hear it back, are you going to make any decisions. Part of this is just, let's marinate a little bit on this. Let's, let's get curious. What is this? But the data is going to come back in the same way that I asked, and that's really, it's a set of principles around how I see groups. Kind of talk a little bit about the purpose level clarity around that, because if there's any fuzziness in some of those behaviors and some of those actions, it's going to affect everything else, right? Then we talk a little bit about people's roles, clarity around roles, the understanding of that, moving that into how work gets done, our core process. You could imagine how work gets done. I mean, if we make any changes to people's roles or tasks, it's going to affect the outcome of our, of our work together. Problem solving shows up in there, right? And then communication patterns, and then finally interpersonal dynamics. And sometimes I get called in to work with groups, and we think that, well, let's do some team building, but sometimes that's not the answer. Sometimes it could be something structural, sometimes in the first couple of categories, purpose or roles or core process. So anyway, that's how I kind of like to see the world, and so the summary report that you're going to get back is going to have some of those thoughts in that area. And then I'm going to mirror back to you what council members thought you could do, and then I'm going to share my recommendations, and we'll go from there. So, sound good? All right, so thanks for helping us out with that, and.
All right. Do you still see the presentation? No, I didn't think so.
Okay, we, we have paper copies, Tracy, so.
Yeah, but they want to see it on people online.
We need to make sure that the people online are able to see it.
Can, can you do full screen on that? It's kind of small. What's that? Okay. A little bit, yes. Okay.
All right, well, in the purpose and roles category, if you find my notes, I did mention a little bit about the first one, that, that people here are very clear about your, your role, and you care very deeply about being a member of the city, and you care very deeply about really the standards that you want to exude for, for this city. There were several of you that commented on the multitude of priorities and the need for a clear process in determining the priorities moving forward, and so, you know, and that's showing up. Several commented on the strategic planning process as an opportunity to align with this, and you're excited. So those were the pieces that showed up in those first two, first two categories. The next one had a lot more comment and a lot more things to show up, and this is about how work gets done as a council. So first, there are some comments and appreciation for, you know, how you're prepared for your meetings, that you believe that that's working well, that there's an appreciation for staff that helped brief you on topics and help you feel more prepared. So anyway, there was some kudos in, in those moments for, for staff and how they help you feel prepared for these meetings. At the same time, there's, there were some comments on getting information to and from the city through executive members. Feel like that has changed, that there is this sense of, you know, what might be contributing to any delays in, in hearing back about things. So they recognize that there is a lot of work going on in the city, that there's dedicated staff, and that there's talented people, and also this deep appreciation, like I said, for that, but there's a, there's a yearning for the ability to directly connect with some of these staff members and to ask more direct questions. Council committees appear to be working well. You commented on that. Some shared that it would be useful to have each new committee, or council member be invited to join a committee soon after they are installed as a full member. And really, there was some intentionality around, how do we continue to support some people moving forward? Maybe a buddy system or mentoring. There is a hope for some more sharing of the community calendar. There was wonderful comments on the new financial tool that is going to be made available, and so council members can, can look to kind of ask some questions and what the impact might be using that tool. But it was also some comments in the area about, well, sometimes there's a need to find out more information about where tasks, other tasks are at in the process, and a need to sort of follow some of that information. Finally, in the core process category, there was some, some council members describing the need to problem solve and hearing that, you know, and they'd, they'd like to get information from some of the folks in, in the city, and they're hearing that staff are really busy. So part of this is an opportunity to sort of ferret that out, understand a little bit more about why some of these questions are, are important, how to get those through to people so that they can help answer that. Anyway, you, you see that. All right, communication patterns.
Dr. Frazier? Yeah, I was like, what page?
Well, I just had to move it to the next page.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Thanks, everybody. You got it. Yep, we're on page two. Thank you. All right, communication patterns. So most council members expressed that the communication with each other they see as collaborative and respectful, thoughtful, participatory, even when there's some disagreements, and that's awesome, right? We want that kind of work with any, any group. There is also how other additional communication gets met through one-on-one meetings and other kinds of things. So there are one-on-one meetings with these two folks next to me. Some of the council members meet weekly, others choose to do it as needed, and those that were doing that expressed that they appreciated it and felt like they had the conversations needed and the interactions, and their questions were answered, and that they were responsive. Some council members have chosen to stop some of those meetings and expressed that they weren't as valuable, weren't meeting their needs. And so again, this is, this is an opportunity to, to look at that, think about the intention of the meeting, and make adjustments. I'm a big fan of, again, if it's not meeting a need, you know, what can you do differently so that it is more useful? Several acknowledged that there are some people who need more help with the tone and timing and tenor and choice of their words when communication topics get tough. There was a few people that talked specifically about when they saw that happening with city staff, and that they wanted to make sure that, you know, we don't put staff into an uncomfortable position with line of questioning, don't want gotchas, things like that. Some described themselves as being direct communicators, recognizing that this plays a part in how others experience them. So again, communication, if you think about it in any group, it's always an opportunity to grow and to learn and to think about, what's my impact? What are the methods in which we're communicating? Are we getting, you know, is it flowing the way we need to? And if not, what adjustments can I make so that we can make that better? Several interviewees shared that they're, you know, trying to deeply listen to understand what is being asked, that they wanted that. Sometimes they're experiencing an immediate no, and part of this is leading to some frustration, so it's an opportunity. So, it's an opportunity to, in that moment, if you're hearing that no or not understanding why you're getting the answer, be present in that conversation. Ask a little bit more. Try something maybe offline. I think there's some more opportunities. But this seemed to be a real pinch point for some folks. There's a desire to receive more of a heads up from communication. And some were sharing some examples that when the topics came late or they were surprised, it had an adverse effect. And then finally, the not talking directly with each other. Sometimes there's some triangulation, being passive aggressive when they want to make a point. And some of, some of you expressed that you believe it's affecting trust. So, again, groups, communication is always a, always an opportunity. Finally, interpersonal dynamics. Most of you described that you have a general respect for each other. There was a deep appreciation for the diversity of the members on the council in terms of the viewpoints that you offer and the length of time that you've been on the council. I mean, there's just so many wonderful things that you, that you brought to that. And there's an opportunity to continue to strengthen respect. There's a few that believe that there's a lack of respect between some of the council members and executive leaders and that that's an opportunity, that some people are feeling that and they want to make that better. There's some unresolved feelings and experiences that affect some key relationships today. That also affects how people communicate and problem solve and interact. You know, so a few people expressed a desire, I'd like to move past that. And yet, one of the things that I've learned in my research and in just practice, that if things go unresolved, they're going to continue to surface. So, the question becomes, how do you work through that so that learning can happen? Sometimes apologies or acknowledgements need to happen because those are huge things to trust. People sometimes just want something acknowledged that whether it was intentional or not, something happened. It's like, okay, I hear you. And so, and sometimes we need a little bit more support and process around that. Let's see. There is, some council members offered that some council members have strong egos and that is impacting trust and interpersonal dynamics. And that rumors and talking about others and people in a negative way can hurt trust. How people talk about one another about it. So, those were the, that was the feedback from you all. Again, in order for something to show up in the bullet, it had to, I had to hear it at least two times or more. And here's the other things that I, you know, again, I, I hooked this back to, right? Again, hooking it back to the very first thing around purpose, but also your hopes for this work, right? Building a strong foundation of trust and getting comfortable together increases your connection together and you'll emerge from this stronger, that you get better, that the city retains staff, that you serve citizens well and you remove any us versus them mentality. That there's a recognition that this work is important. You're going to have a new mayor and a council and that you want to have trust be strengthened from that process and moving forward. But you also want the current mayor to leave when her term ends on a positive note. Finally, that people take accountability to be the best team member they can be and come in with positive intentions. So, those are the hopes, but there was also some concerns, right? There's that, is it possible to move past some of the broken trust moments? There's a lot of personal feelings. It's a risk for the public if all of us don't work together and work well. Maybe, you know, making sure that the focus is on just a few things, right? If you do too many, you may not get, get it all done. And that this work may not stick or that people may not be authentic. I'll pause there because I do believe it's important to have just, again, echoed back collectively what I heard. My hope is that while you're hearing this and marinating on it, that there are times when we can read, we can have multiple truths, right? We can be recognizing that, you know, there's, there's some great things happening and at the same time, there's work to be done. That you can be, you know, serving on the same committee or the same council and some people have different experiences. And all of that is all about group dynamics and it's just the way human nature is. But I do believe it's, it's as you look at this, and there's such appreciation for the talent, that I believe collectively you have the talent to make some, make some of these adjustments and make some of the things better that you are identifying. Page four has the things that I asked council members, what would you do, right? If you were sort of in my position, offering something back, what do you think that this group could and should work on? So, you can see what you're offering. There are things around your priorities, putting things in sync, working on that strategic plan. You know, working to strengthen and improve the onboarding process of new council members to make sure that people feel, you know, understood and connected, that there's a mentorship or buddy system perhaps. So, you, you had a lot of ideas and those are wonderful things to, to explore. You talked about strengthening and I might not have had the right writing for this, but the constituent comment process, you know, when you get a, a question or a comment from someone in the community, you know, the tracking of that, sharing that information. Some offered, you know, do we wait for January for team building? Others said, we would just want to make sure that we continue to build trust. So, again, I know you can read and you can look down this list. You know, will you be candid? Do you value each other? There's an opportunity to stop and have everybody focus on your own improvements and not take things personally. Apologize where you need to, understand that you're affecting others. Be conscious of stakeholders and better stakeholder management. Share the community calendar, learn how to reframe, right? Find ways to get to that yes or is it no? Is it not right now? Is it something different? But stay engaged. And then finally, manage egos. So, before we move into maybe what some of the ideas are for what I would call the short term, right? So, here it is. We've taken a pulse check. And like I said, I gave my caveat, I only had one hour with each of you. So, this isn't, this is meant to kind of just say, what do you believe is at play? And then what ideas do we have that can strengthen your relationships, your ability to communicate, your ability to problem solve so that it can complement your strategic planning work between now and the end of the year? I mean, that was part of the intention of, of inviting me to come in and, and check in with all of you. And then there's some ideas from January on about what the council could possibly do. So, I wanted to just see, just a quick pause before we move into now, what do we do, right? The leadership is, what do we do next? And I'll offer this too. It, because I find this in qualitative studies and other kinds of things, it's not as important to find out who said what as much as just recognizing that there are people that have these experiences. These are, these are some of the thinking. And it's like, when you think of these themes, what can you do collectively as a group to make some things better? I'll just pause there and see what might be showing up for some of you before we move into what can we do? Any comments or questions?
I'd like to ask a question.
Dr. McAlkey?
Were, were all of these responses only from council members? Is this just, is it just the seven of us?
I did eight. I included the mayor.
Oh, okay. So, yeah. I could, I can hear, I can hear us in, in these responses. I think a big question is, how do we move from here to January and beyond? And after we reach January and have immediately a new council member and then we have to possibly appoint one? Do, do we, I'm trying to think of how I feel about the dynamic changing and, and what, what might be different in, in, if we, if you ask us all of these questions in February or, or March and how to work toward. I don't know exactly how to work toward. I don't know. Maybe I'm just confused, but I don't know if anybody else sees that the, the answer to these questions is some years of everything the way it is now. And we're doing this when there's a short period of time before this, these dynamics will change. So, I'm, I'm, I guess I'm wondering how these carry through, carry over? You know, do our egos get bigger or smaller? I'm, I'm just wondering about this out, out loud. Don't know if any-
Sure, Joan. Council member, Joan, sorry.
Yeah, it's okay.
All right, all right. Good. I'll just call you all by your first name if that's okay. All right, good. But, so, on the next page, when I get to that, I do believe that there are a few things that, that, that can be done. I believe at the individual level, that there are some things that, if you know that things are kind of bugging you, that how do you go and strengthen that moment? Like maybe, it's like, maybe we negotiate and have better meetings. Do we, do we, if, if I'm curious about why I might be getting a particular response, how do we help people with maybe some of those communication patterns in that moment so that you can go and learn a little bit more? Because I'm thinking about where are some of the frustrating points for folks? And I do believe that perhaps maybe a revisit around some communication practices, that what, what are some best practices? Maybe a little bit around, you know, communication modes and approaches, styles, reminders in this moment could help us in, in, actually several areas because communication was mentioned. I believe that there can be some, some opportunities in what I would call the, the structure and process. So, there's a, and I had that question, you know, it's like, I don't know your process of how you communicate back with each other in, when a constituent idea comes in, right? So, does that need a refresh about what the process is and things like that? So, sometimes it's, we need information. And sometimes if you're doing that and you recognize, well, could we, you're all capable of making some adjustments in some of these processes. So, if it's not working for you, I think that some of those would be opportunities to talk about. And you could do that between now and the end of the year. Because if there's something that's kind of bugging you, I think that, I think that you could do that. There's a tool that I'm even hoping that we might have time tonight to share. I was thinking if I gave you a little gift of something, something that's really helped me in some relationships and things when I've had some challenging moments. And I'll be sharing that with you in a little bit. So, yes, I'm, I'm a perpetual optimist, Joan. I do believe that there's a few things that can be done between, well, that's why I bring this work because otherwise it gets kind of frustrating. It's like, we've got to believe in a little bit of hope. There's got to be something that we can do. And I do believe that there can be some adjustments and some things that can be done between now and the end of the year. And I can help with strategic planning conversations. If we find a better way to stay engaged and I can learn and get better with my curiosity type questions, if I recognize like, oh, maybe the way I was asking questions before didn't land right with people. But maybe after I've had a refresh, maybe certain ways I could frame something, people are all willing to kind of have that conversation.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not being a pessimist here. I'm, 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 I think, yeah, I, I, I feel optimistic. I feel hopeful. I, I do want some things to be, you know, open, honest, respectful. I'm not, you know, you can work on that or practice that anytime. I mean, that's the way we need to be doing business, so to speak. I just, I, I just think that we have some things that you're right, that we could be doing, maybe differently. Yeah, definitely. Between now and the end of the year. Because we're looking, were you looking toward us when you asked these questions and spent time with us, which I really appreciate it? I, I felt, I, I felt free to talk with you and, and I needed more than an hour after as many years as I've been here of old things and new things and, and so forth. But we're, we're also in a unique position here where, where one of our council members is going to be the next mayor. So, I think that changes some of the, of the conversation and how we move through these next months. I'm not sure exactly how, but I think, I think there's, I think, I think these next few months are more important than we realize. So, anyway.
Nice. We could look at it as an investment, right?
Yeah.
It's an investment. Yeah, yeah. Here's the other piece that might be useful too. As I share some ideas, this isn't meant to be a recipe. These are some ideas that, that the group can chew on and we could think about what could be done. But in my, in my work and in my research, when trust is at play, it took groups on average six to 36 months to repair and strengthen trust. And so, part of that is because there's multiple things at play and we've got to try multiple things. There's not just a one-day retreat that's going to fix everything. There's not a half-day class on communication patterns that's going to fix it. It takes kind of intentionality of everybody trying out some of these new, maybe some new or renewed skills, right? Sometimes it's just like, oh, yeah, I get better. And, and practicing it and supporting each other as you're practicing it. And when you have a little setback, bring a little levity into that and bring people forward. So, those are the kinds of practices that I help. And I do believe you have the foundation for that. In listening to each of you, the foundation is there. So, that's it, again, that hope that you want to do this to strengthen the city and your connection and the reason why you're here and you're better legislators, you're better, you know, public servants when you can work through and strengthen some of these areas that seem to be pinch points.
I'm with you.
Awesome. Any other questions? Or do you want me to kind of share a little bit about what I was thinking that might support your next four-ish, five-ish months?
One of the, it's just that trust, I think, is a recurring theme that we see in here. And it sort of harkens back to me to when we've had other retreats where we established kind of a baseline of assumptions that we all make. And usually the first one that we have is to assume positive intent with one another. And I think that that is so critical and vital to these things, especially in like, I love the section in here about, I, I mean, I wish that we had like transcribed all of our answers to like why we came to this work. Because I know everyone's would be so inspiring. And there would be so many different elements that we all have in common. We've all individually probably had those conversations with one another at one point in time of like, what is your why for why you're here? What's your, like, what is your definition of leadership and being a servant leader? And how do you see yourself embodying that? And I think we just have like so much in common for what we see as our role and as the ways that we can be contributors and helpers and co-conspirators for achieving those goals with one another. And that like trust is the biggest factor in that and that we all have to trust that we have this vision and that we're doing our best to achieve it. And that we might have different definitions or paths for how to get there, but assuming we have the positive intent to achieve the brighter future that we want for our city, for ourselves, for our families, for our neighbors, for our kids, like that, I think, is, is what really resonates with me in this document and will be longer than this council and ideally.
I, I agree with my, I just want to add to what he said. I think that that's also something that we do, we have talked about among ourselves over the years or different things come up and we say, well, that's why, that's why I ran for office or that's what I would like to see happen in the community. You know, like lately, council member Jefferson was part of, of bringing the NAACP to Thurston County, to Tumwater. And that was a, a hope. And I don't know if she dreamt about it or not, but a, a dream about it. And, you know, we were, I, I felt not only excited- And, you know, we were, I, I felt not only excited about that, but proud, proud. It gave me another reason why I like being, you know, a member of a council that has the, the power, if you will, to, to do things like, to do things like that. I think what we also need to do is take this, why we're all here and this feeling and, and have it not be just among council, but also among the staff. This is why someone wants to be the mayor. This is why someone wants to be the, the, the city attorney. God bless her. And, and why, and why someone wants to be the city administrator. God bless her twice. And all of that, I mean, we, we have some responsibility for our, our, what Michael said, our, our respect and our, our joy sometimes of sharing with one another why we're here doing that. We need to realize that our, our staff, all the way, you know, down to custodial people, they, they want to be here and do this. And I don't know if we've, we've communicated strongly how we, we feel about, you know, staff people from, from the mayor and the administrator on down. So that, that's the thing that I think about and hope for.
Nice. Councilmember Jefferson?
Is this the end of the briefing?
No.
Okay. So are you going to have a way ahead? Because I'm wondering, I'm thinking that we need to continue this work and continue this discussion. When we have our new team in place, our new leader in place. So do we have a timeframe for our next retreat yet?
So we have work that we're planning to do on the strategic plan and that's all outlined. When we talked to Dr. Frazier, we talked with her just about this initial phrase, phrase, phase, excuse me. And, and really, in, in my mind, it is, it's up to the council at this point, how and what we would do going forward. So if you find the work that Dr. Frazier did helpful and you found recommendations in here that, that appealed to you and you feel like there's more work to do, we can, we can define that and, and move forward. We do have, we have budget allocations that will, that we would need to deal with. But if this is something that the council wants to continue with the work into, you know, 2026, we can, we can figure out a way to, to make that happen.
Okay, okay. That's my recommendation. Let's not make it a one-time thing where we'll put this on the shelf. So, so I think we can engage, I recommend we engage further a little bit to take, to get more out of this instead of just putting it on the shelf. Thanks.
So if, I can go through then on page five, I can give some of the highlights of what I'm suggesting between now and the end of the year. And then, then I have just a, just a, some, some bullets that are just like, okay, moving forward is that you're, what I'm hearing from you Angela is like, you know, that, from that retreat on, from when you have your, your new team forward, I have some suggestions, but it's not, it's not meant to be a, a complete list. But between now and the end of the year, one, you know, where you can fit it in. And you may have people within the city, right? Your communications team, I mean, there are, there are people that can give you just some wonderful reminders on communication, best communication practices. How do you be conscious of your tone? How do we be conscious of, you know, the timing of when we ask things? You know, there's different formats that we can share information. And again, it's communication practices. When I think of practice, I mean, the best athletes in the world, right? People, best artists, I mean, people spend thousands of hours with their craft. And to me, communication is a constant work in progress. So sometimes it's reminders, sometimes it's thinking of what are all the modes that we use and, and how is that serving us? So that seemed to be an area that this group wanted to focus a little bit on. It was a pinch point. So anyway, I would suggest trying to find time, weave that into wherever you see fit. Or I don't know what it looks like to have a special session or not. I do believe that there might be a couple of, a couple of folks that would, that would serve, working through a couple of issues at the interpersonal level. I use the term facilitated conversation. That could be, you know, mediation. But it's just in a neutral setting where you can sort through maybe some of those areas that are, are really affecting the relationship. So that is private, that is something that is always available to folks. And again, there's resources in the community. It's also things that I could do, you know, like a dispute resolution center. Not that it's a dispute, but sometimes they just provide a nice structured, neutral space for people to sort through things if, if needed. And I think that that could be useful in a couple of areas with a couple of folks. I am giving this to you. So again, this is stuff that you don't have to spend a lot of time. But to me, it was so profound in my research, just to understand how powerful acknowledgement is. And I don't know if you've, you've ever been, it's just like someone you just want them to hear like, yeah, I messed up. And you just feel like, ah, I mean, you could just see it in someone's body when somebody kind of owns their part. So acknowledgement in terms of strengthening trust is, is huge. There's the arts of an apology. There's some additional pieces. Again, I've got some information in there. I've got a handout I can share it with you. But sometimes understanding that. And I have worked with groups that have had like events that have happened like 10 years before. And that it continues to surface. And this whole piece around acknowledgement and sometimes, see, the, the, an apology has three facets to it. One, the ones that stick and the ones that matter. It's acknowledging, again, whether it was intentional or not, something happened, that there was an impact. The second is, is there something that you can do to make it right? And third, it's what am I going to do different so that it doesn't happen again? When you get those three pieces in there, the likelihood of that relationship being strengthened goes up. Not that it's going to be perfect, but it, like I said, it, it goes up and you could just see the, the changes. So anyway, I've got information in the book for you and I've got a handout if that's useful. But spending some time on that, that's cool. I think that clarifying some of the structural things in here. And again, I might not have gotten everything correct because I had one hour. I was trying to capture as much as possible. But there is some opportunity to think about how information flows to and from. How do you strengthen that? How do you strengthen some of the transparency? And again, I don't know enough to say, is that a process that is just needs touching up and sharing? Or is it something that needs improvement that'll go beyond December? But I'm leaving that in, you know, of course, it's all in your hands to, to do. But I think there's an opportunity there. And then finally, this is the, the tool that I wanted to share with you tonight. The values tool, it's based in positive psychology and positive intelligence. And I have found it has been a very useful way for me to figure out how to work with someone when I'm sort of being, when I'm experiencing something that I don't like or when I'm noticing something that I don't like. When I can kind of shift into the view of, from, from a values perspective or what's important, it, it offers up more leverage, it offers up more possibilities. And I just wanted to share that with you, to kind of leave that with you. So, but I'm not going to start that yet. I just wanted to see that these, not to overwhelm the system, but I think that if you did a few of these things and started working toward it, it might make a difference in your conversations. Because again, this was about complementing your strategic planning work. Let me switch the page and then I'll just tell you what I'm thinking January on. And then we'll go back to, to this. So moving forward, when you have new leadership in the city, so every group needs, and, and again, I don't know how much time you spend at your retreats, but I have found that no matter where you're at, spending time getting to know one another, the stronger the connectivity in any group, the more productive you are and the more you can handle challenges. You know, just think about how, you know, water flows or electricity flows. If there's, if there's any break in the pipes, you know, like in water or there's a leak, you're not going to be as efficient. So we need to think about, how do you keep the connectivity between people? Will you do that by spending some time and getting to know one another? And getting back to what you said earlier, Michael, understanding each other's why? It's a very powerful link that you can have with people. And knowing just a little bit about somebody, it's like, I care about you and so I'm going to work on this with you. If I don't know enough about somebody or if I don't have a stronger connection, then if we have a challenge, sometimes it's easier for me just to say, oh, well, you know? So, so stepping into that, making time for that and not just do it once, there's multiple times. I think that there's some powerful work by Otto Schormer on four levels of listening. I think that for any group, it's a good reminder about listening skills. It's very good. He's got a short video and some information and so it could be self-taught too. Or you can loop that into some communication pieces. There's always need for communication skills and strategies. When you have new people, maybe it's kind of fun to talk about people's styles and what are the, some of the best ways to leverage each other's styles? And what might be some things that, you know, we could learn about? Well, when this is happening, how do I continue to communicate with you? Talk about some emotional intelligence. I think that this, you know, this whole piece around rumors and how do we raise awareness of what we say and how we say and what its effect on others? Discerning what's important to someone, you know, interests versus what their, you know, what the proposal might be. Classic negotiation. But again, I think about the work that you do. And this is a real strong skill set of, of helping someone say what, what really matters. And that's where you get the most leverage. Reframing. I'm always a fan of process improvement. So there's process pieces here at the end. So, you know, the committee assignments, how you support them, onboarding, you know, again, these are just, it's a one bullet point, but there's a lot of work that it takes to, to do this well. And I recognize, I recognize that. All right. And then of course, the, you know, explore and activate some things at the individual level. How are you self-assessing? Communication or the community calendar and things like that. So, okay. Lots of things moving forward. And I would suspect that, you know, through the end of the year and as you get together as a set of leaders, you'll have a, a reset opportunity to say, what do we think we want? And you incorporate that into your retreat, you incorporate that into your plan moving forward. So these are just some ideas based on, well, based on only eight hours of conversations. So, what are you thinking? What's on your mind? Do you want to learn this tool? Do you want to kind of process a little bit in any way? How can I be of service next?
Wendy, are you asking that question for right now? Now, or?
Good question, yes. I was just thinking like the time that we have right now, how can I be of service? I can, I can, I can walk you through the tool that really gets me excited, that I think might be useful. Happy to do that. I think it would take 15 minutes or so and, and learn a little bit. That's, and, and, but I also wanted to give you a chance to kind of, if, if there was anything that struck you about what I just shared, that you wanted to comment on, that this is really for you. And Peter, I saw your hand. Is that something that, is there a question you have or a comment?
All right, thank you. I was going to ask the same question that Joan asked right now and her alone. So you did answer those two questions.
All right. Okay. Anything else? Think I should move ahead with the tool or?
I mean, I, I think that we've all identified some level of communication opportunities and that the only way you improve communication is through more communication. So I, I would love to know sort of what that process could entail. I'm also recognizing that, you know, I, I will be on this body for five more months. So you will have one, at least one toxic personality exiting from stage left. But I, I, I think it would be helpful to sort of understand what that could look like. I, I don't know what I don't know and I've never been a part of a process like that. So I think I would be interested to at least just sort of learn more of what that would look like to help foster kind of greater transparency, communication and trust. I want to speak for everyone.
I agree, I agree. I'd like to know, I'd like to know.
I mean, I would too, just to be honest, not right now, like not tonight. I need to digest, this is the first that I've seen this, right? We didn't get it in advance and I get that. I need to digest a little bit. And I think it's great to continue to move forward and see how Wendy can help us. I dig that idea. I just don't know how effective I'm going to be, Wendy, tonight doing it, if that makes any sense.
It does. It does. And I will also offer that, you know, I think when it comes to some of these communication practices, for example, just kind of sticking with that thread, that I'd be really kind of be hungry to learn about what are some of the resources, again, within the city that can help with that? There are things that I can complement. There are things that I know that are in my wheelhouse and some things not in my wheelhouse when it comes to this breadth of communication practices. But I do really well with reframing. I do well with helping people pause and listen and, and this thing called conscious use of self. How do I stop and slow down enough that I can be intentional about really how am I bringing myself to this moment? Right? Am I approaching it from a place of curiosity or something else? So those are some places and I've got some tools and some things that can help. So I think that there might be a thing that I could support you with and there are things that maybe others can too. So, yeah.
Pia, can I ask you a question?
What if I said no?
Then I wouldn't.
Yes, Joan, you can ask me anything.
I wouldn't, you know, breach that, especially on camera. I was just wondering it, when you, you don't feel up to it tonight, when would we, when would we do that? How would, how would we put this follow-up 15 minutes into another space when we haven't been together talking about it tonight?
Right. I mean, I guess for me that, as I'm also virtual, right? So trying to balance my other obligations, right? So I had the book to get to this meeting. We're virtual, so it's harder for me. That's the thing, one of the reasons, like if we could schedule a time where we get in person and do it, I think it would be, it would help us with that communication piece. It's hard when there's a delay and there's a lag and we're virtual. So I think that's why I'm not really feeling it tonight, because I, I'm isolated in a box. And you can't have that flow of conversation and reading that energy like we normally do when we're together physically.
Harder to interrupt.
I mean, I can still do it with you, but it's just, it's the timing is off.
Okay, thank you for that. Thank you for answering that.
Like I would love an example, like something's coming up that we practice. Like Wendy helps us with some tools on an issue, right? Like so a little more specificity of like a topic, right? So one of them could be any of the comprehensive plan elements, right? But some other contentious items are the FLOC system, right? That's in the budget, but we have some issues. So could that be an example of how when you have strong opinions on a council, how do we move forward and how does that align with a budget? So could we find an example from general government, public works or public health and safety to practice this on and like model the way? That's what I think would be helpful for me.
I hear you.
Councilmember Jefferson?
Okay. We need this, not just us as council, but senior leaders also. And like what was just said, let's make it intentional. Let's have time to come together, to absorb this information, to learn this information. That's what I would rather do. I think that we need to just focus on it and learn from it. And I don't want it to be rushed, I want it to be intentional.
Okay, so what I'm hearing is we want to schedule more time and a special group where we're actually-
actually committed to getting together in person to work on this. All right. So this will definitely be after council recess. And so we'll be getting back if there's a, a specific time that doesn't work for you, please keep us posted. Councilmember Gaby?
Thank you. So if I'm to read Lieta's mind and Joan's mind, so I'm thinking a, a council retreat in Honolulu, maybe, right? I, I didn't see anybody laugh, but shaking your head. I said, let me repeat, a council retreat in Honolulu, Hawaii. So, so not to be serious, we've spent two Saturdays doing strategic sessions. And for some of us, those are very busy times that we have to take out of whatever we're doing to go to those. And I do understand that what, what this is, is, I won't say it's serious, it's sort of, so when you have cousins and brothers and sisters, aunts, and you invite everybody to come to Thanksgiving dinner, and then you have that dynamic where everything sort of go wild, I think that's where we are. So in order for us to work through this, and you say it's going to take 15 minutes, my thinking is it's going to take more than 15 minutes because the thing you put up has to do mostly with interpersonal relationship and the dynamics that surrounds that. It's not necessarily what we do as council members, because you did say that there's some respect or respect amongst us. So it is the interpersonal relationship and how we see our roles that is the issue. So that is going to require more than 15 minutes. That's just my take.
I agree, Peter.
Thank you.
These special meetings aside from work sessions?
So are you requesting a special meeting aside from a work session?
Yes, yes. At least something that lasts more than an hour or so, depending if we agree that we could spare at least two hours of our time.
So are you looking at Councilor Dahlhoff? Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm just thinking along the same lines, Mayor, is that if we're going to do it together, we need to do it together, right? And so all of council needs to be there. So could we start smaller and start with public works, general government, public health and safety, right? So either we're all there, if it's, if this is for council, then council needs to be engaged and needs to lead this, right? With Wendy. It, so Kelly Von Holtz is not here, so we're missing. Eileen is sick, so we're not having the full engagement. So could we start smaller and start with our committees and start that way? So then it's not an extra meeting because it's summertime. I don't want to do another Saturday, to be honest, because as a caregiver and my other responsibilities, it takes a toll on my other responsibilities, and I understand that I signed up for this. And how do we balance and juggle and be realistic if it's council-led? If it's for council, then all of council needs to be there. So I would recommend starting smaller in a smaller group.
Councilmember Altuser?
I, I think, I think it's a good idea to look at when we, when do we already have things scheduled? Because we know that we've already booked, blocked that timeout. That makes a lot of sense to me, Lieta. I think sort of the challenge we might run into, and this is being myopic, but just looking at general government, is we continually run out of time every month because we're working on the comp plan. And I, it, I think we would need a special day to do it anyway if we break it down by committee, just because we don't, we barely have enough calendar time in a year to kind of get through what we're trying to get through right now. Like I wonder to, to, to your point, if we look at something like where we have a council meeting that begins at 7:00 PM, does that mean we could get here, to your point, Peter, at like 5:30? And then you have like 90 minutes in a time where we've already known that we're going to be here anyway at 7:00 PM? We could get here early and try to do something early? I think the risk we run there is if this is like a really heady kind of emotional communication session, and then we'll be in kind of a funky state for a council meeting, but maybe that makes it faster because we'll be, we'll have such a good time for the 90 minutes prior. But I, I like your idea of looking at when we already know we're going to be here, which is either, you know, a work session or a council meeting and seeing if we can adjust times so that we, we know that we can kind of do something along those lines. Or we also have a fifth Tuesday, maybe here or there before the end of the calendar year that could be utilized, but.
So my request is to give back, give me feedback on what you would want to do, and then we can work with Wendy to find the time to do that. You know, if it's like a council meeting beforehand, readjusting a work session, doing a fifth Tuesday, whatever that might be, so we can kind of, you know, because we wanted this one in person also, but that didn't apparently work out for everyone. So, you know, it was intentioned to be in person. So if it is a work session, we need to make sure that we have a commitment from all the council members to be in person for that particular work session.
There is chocolate here, so some of y'all are just now, I've eaten a lot of it, but I, I, I commit to saving some for the next one, so there is that incentive.
Labby is good.
Yeah.
Right. And I have books for you all.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'll leave you all a book.
Yeah, we'll, we'll put a book in your mail slot. All right. Any, anything else or any other questions?
Looks like, all right, well, looks like scheduling brings us out in communication. About when we're going to communicate again, so.
All right. So now we're going to go to the Mayor City Administrator Report, and I'll start out with City Administrator Har.
Great, thank you, Mayor. So I have lots of good news tonight, and after last week, I'm glad for good news. I was talking to Acting Deputy Chief Kelese here before the meeting, and last week, and actually the week before that, have been really challenging here at the City of Tumwater. We've had lots, lots of, lots of challenging things, and so good news tonight. So we have a new economic development coordinator starting on August 18th. We had 20 people apply for that position. We interviewed five very highly qualified candidates, including a couple of people from out of state. However, we offered the position to Jean Angel, who currently works as the Director of Research and Evaluation at Thurston EDC, and he has accepted. So Jean has 10 years of economic development experience. All of that is here in Thurston County. So he comes built in with strong connections throughout the county and the surrounding region, and we are super excited to have Jean join our team here in mid-August. Another piece of good news, so yesterday we received word that firefighter EMT Travis Leva has earned the Outstanding Instructor Award from the South Sound Recruit Academy. That award is voted on by the actual recruits in the class, and it just demonstrates a real positive impact Travis had on, on their experience at that, at that academy. Battalion Chief James Osberg says this, Travis works very hard at instructing and is passionate about passing down and giving back what he has, what he was given as a recruit. So congratulations to Travis on that well-deserved award. We also now have a way in which community members can easily access information about the paper project. Right on the homepage, if you open up the City of Tumwater homepage, there is a way in which you can quickly and easily access information about what the schedule is, what the projected focus areas are of that paper project by week. And it also allows you to access an interactive map that our GIS team put together, that you can click on a specific spot on the map and find out what the actual project is that's happening in that area, whether it's still planned, or whether it's in progress or completed. So that's really great information that our, our TED team, as well as GIS and Communications Group put together. And then this past weekend, the Tumwater Soccer Club hosted their 46th Annual Kick in the Grass Youth Soccer Tournament, and that includes play on several of the fields at Pioneer Park. So I understand from Chuck, there were 89 teams that participated in the tournament, and over a two-day period of time, there were 55 soccer games played at Pioneer Park this last weekend. So, and that's what I have.
Great, thank you. So I don't need to remind you that we do have a recess for three weeks, and so I want to let you know that there will probably be a point where our staff will be taking some needed vacation during that time when we're less busy. And we have a couple of things coming up. Of course, there's night out, I've.
National night.
National night out. Why, I just all of a sudden couldn't remember. So there will be a list of, you know, there's, as you know, there's usually like 12, 18 locations. So as soon as that becomes a solid, you know, certainly you can have access to the list of locations. I always try to do that every year, I think it was like 12 or 18. I maybe get four or five in, there's just no way you can do a whole bunch of them. So that, and then Brew Fest will be right after we get back. So with that, there's a lot of events going on, and I hope everyone enjoys having a nice little break for three weeks. So with that, we are adjourned, everyone.
Can I say, I want to say, Wendy?
Yeah.
For, for being here and for listening to all of us. It was good it was in little chunks, just an hour, because as you can see, many of us can go on and, President Speaker included. And so I really appreciate what you've done and a chance to have some more time with you on a specific area is, I'm looking forward to it. And thank you again. And congratulations, Lisa, to all the people involved to hire an Economic Development Director and to be proud about our firefighter. I, I agree with you. Good news compared to some of what we have heard. So thanks for all the work that goes into that hiring stuff. I'm finished.
All right. So thank you very, very much. And with that, we are adjourned, everyone. Thank you.